Good evening, this is the October 26, 2013 meeting of the Gostown Board of Selectment. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business tonight is the acceptance and correction of the minutes of the August 19, 2013 minutes and the July 29, 2013 non-public minutes.
Move to accept if there's any corrections as well.
Motion to accept.
Second.
And a second. We have first corrections.
I just had one on page nine.
Page nine?
This is the third paragraph. We're talking about the traffic signal timing where it says, he said this was a good idea and should be implemented, but there was a cost associated. He added that smart code overlay on the existing zoning ordinance is not needed. I don't know if we just reworded that. What I was referring to is that it was a good example of something in the plan that could be implemented without an associated zoning ordinance or code. In other words, it's something that the board or the town could implement without a code requiring it. And that's all I had.
Okay, thank you.
You have another one?
Nope, good. I did not have any, so we'll take up those minutes. We had a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero. Point out to the folks watching on TV, we're a little late on the board this evening. Selectman Brown and Selectman DeVanzo couldn't join us this evening, but we do have a quorum. So we will forge ahead. Next are the July 29, 2013 non-public minutes.
Motion to accept.
Second, is any corrections needed?
Motion and a second. Corrections necessary? None from my left. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries three zero. Zero. I have a few announcements that we'll read before our public comment at 6:10. The first one is a letter from the family of Jillian Elizabeth Johnson. It's addressed to the Honorable Board of Selectmen in Gostown, New Hampshire. Whereas the town of Gostown, New Hampshire has honored our amazing mother, we wish to extend our heartfelt thanks for this special recognition. It is rare that a family gets to keep their beloved mother in their lives for such a sweet period of time. Selectman Collis Adams and Vice Chairman Mark Lemay presented the Boston Post Kane and read the proclamation with such kindness and consideration, and she was so grateful with her remarks, "From the cuff." It was very moving and especially sentimental for us, a memorable event for a memorable lady on her 101st birthday. And honorable mention to Catherine Fisher, who coordinated the proclamation with such patience with me throughout the editing process and her positive approach. She's a jewel and a fine goodwill ambassador for Gostown. Therefore, we want to recognize these two outstanding gentlemen for their service to the town and thank them again for their participation in Miss Lilly's special event. It is a joy to live in a town that takes such interest in their citizenry. And it's signed by the family of Jillian Elizabeth Johnson on the occasion of her 101st year. Very nice letter. I have another note here. This is addressed to Megan Pariot at the DPW. It says, Dear Megan and all our friends at DPW, thank you so very much for all of your time and efforts towards our Touch a Truck program. While the weather was not great, the kids who attended had a blast. We couldn't have done it without you. Should we do it again next summer but with a planning rain date? Many thanks, Patty at the Gostown Public Library. And again, Megan, an extra thanks for reading stories and bringing in all the construction gear. This is a very nice note as well. Then I have a press release. This is from the City of Manchester Health Department. It's roll to the Eastern Equine Encephalitis found in Manchester mosquitoes, and I'll just read the introduction. Manchester Health Department announced today that a batch of mosquitoes collected in Manchester on August 12, 2013 have tested positive for Eastern Equine Encephalitis or triple E. According to Tim Susi, Manchester Public Health Director, while the finding of triple E in the community is not unexpected, we want to remind all of the residents of Manchester to take steps to prevent being bitten by mosquitoes and to eliminate standing water on their property. Eastern Equine Encephalitis is transmitted through the bite of an infected mosquito that has picked up the virus by feeding on an infected bird. Triple E is a serious disease that carries a high mortality rate for those who contract the more serious encephalitis form of the illness. Symptoms may include high fever, severe headache, stiff neck, and sore throat. There is no treatment for the disease. Symptoms usually occur four to 10 days after being bitten. Manchester Health Department has established an information line to assist citizens with concerns and questions about the West Nile virus and triple E. The phone number is 628-6003, extension 325. That line is staffed during normal business hours. After normal business hours, citizens can leave a voicemail message that will be returned the next business day. So residents of Gostown ought to be aware of those same symptoms in the event they exhibit them. Do we have any other public announcements?
No, sir.
None from the left? None from the right. When do we get started on the auditor's report? Will people come into public comment? Move into that as we can. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Frank Byron, President of Lansing Heath, and this is Pat Mohan, who supervised the audit. And Patrick's prepared this evening to walk through the highlights of the audit, some of the key numbers and some of the issues that we dealt with during the course of the audit, so just let Pat take over.
Great. I'd like you to turn to page one of the financial statements. It's the independent auditor's report. And should note right off that the auditor report has changed from last year in the sense that the formatting, there's some new headings, overall very similar, but there's two key pieces on here. The halfway down the page, the management's responsibility for the financial statements. It spells out what the town of Gostown's management is responsible in that the preparation and presentation of the financial statements are in accordance with accounting principles, generally accepted in the United States of America. Would then like you to look at the auditor's responsibility, which spells out what we came in to do and what you hired us for, and that's to test those balances, to make sure that they're in accordance with those accounting principles, and then to express an opinion on it. The opinion is actually on page two, about a third of the way down, and in our opinion, the financial statements were clean and there was no qualifications, and that is the best opinion that you can get. So again, another clean opinion for the town of Gostown.
The wording changes, by the way, that's not specific to Gostown. This is all audits out there. It's a new audit standard that said this is the standard audit report format now.
Following the auditor's report is the management's discussion and analysis. It's a summary of the numbers that we're going to speak about. It goes from pages four to 11, and while it's summary, I'd like to skip ahead to the page 12, which we'll talk about in more detail. Page 12 is the statement of net position. It's the full accrual basis of accounting, and that is where you're going to see your capital assets, your bonds payable. There's two primary columns here. You have your governmental activities, and then you have your business-type activities. The business-type activities represent your sewer fund, which we're going to talk about a little bit more on page 19 when we get there. Our focus is going to be on the governmental activities, which is all your funds, your general fund, your capital reserves, your special revenue, permanent trust funds, debt and fixed assets. Two big key pieces is about halfway down, you're going to see land and construction in progress and other capital assets net of accumulated depreciation. These are your fixed assets. It's the only spot that they're showing up. They're further explained in the footnotes, but it's important to note that this is the spot that they're showing right now. Two-thirds of the way down, your bonds payable. It's broken up between current portion and non-current portion. It's very low at this point, which the bond rating agencies look at, and it's very good standing at this point as far as the amount. And then the other liabilities, right underneath bonds payable net of current portion, the The largest part of that is your other post-employment benefits, and I know there was going to be some questions a little bit later on, that if we wait till then, we can answer those questions. But of that number, the other post-employment benefits is $1,018,822. So that's the largest portion of that other liabilities. At this point, would like to move to the fund basis on page 14. The fund basis is comprised of your general fund, your non-major governmental funds, and it's what you're used to really looking at on a regular operational basis. Your non-major governmental funds, the second column, it's made up of special revenue funds, which is where your EMS fund, your recreation revolving, and your permanent trust funds are. But I'd like to bring the focus over to the general fund. In the general fund, you'll remember that with Gatsby 54, the capital reserves are combined with your general fund. We can see that capital reserve amount primarily in the restricted cash, about a third of the way down, it's represented by $269,429. Going back to the cash and short-term investments, it's noted that there's the amount $14,121,624. While that seems like a very large balance, in which it is, if you note about halfway down mid-page, it's offset by a due to the school district of $8,392.09. That's the amount that's going to be paid out after December 31, 2012, because they operate on a fiscal basis versus a calendar basis. Back underneath the assets, you'll see property tax receivable in the amount of $2,331,020. While it's a large number, two-thirds of that number represents the tax bills that were sent out in December and will be collected within, primarily in the next 60 days to 90 days of the next year. So while it's large, two-thirds represents primarily current, and the remaining balance is all leaned, so the town is not going to, has a legal hold on those receivables, so there's no potential loss there. Further down, would like you, two-thirds of the way down, the unassigned balance is That's up $837,544 from the year before, which is again, another very good year with, between turnbacks, and also we'll discuss further, but the town did not use any of the fund balance this past year, so that was a, most of the turnbacks and everything went right back into fund balance. And I also believe that you have a fund balance policy, and within that, this fund balance is actually exceeding what your policy has for now, so you're in very good shape there.
Capitalcy number, how much more is it this year than last year? Eight hundred and?
$837,544.
Thank you.
And that's on the GAAP basis.
Okay.
The other reporting model is the MS5, which is the state reporting.
Right.
Which differs slightly from the GAAP basis in that the state doesn't recognize deferred revenue, in which the GAAP basis does, and they also look at having the education expenses and the county expenses involved. So on a GAAP basis, the unassigned number for the current year, which is also on page 40, is $5,682,477. That also is up almost the same amount by $723,661. And again, on an MS5 basis, the number represents 11% of your budgeted expenditures, which again exceeds the state's recommended, recommendation of 5 to 10% of fund balance, so again, exceeding the standards.
So the GAAP one is the one the state uses? That five million?
Well, the GAAP number is actually the number you see on this page, the third number up from bottom.
Four million.
Four million, three oh five, eight oh four. So GAAP being generally accepted accounting principles, which is the way these financial statements are. Department of Revenue, though, would add back the deferred revenue, which appears about four, five lines up from that of $1,821,988.
Yep.
But then there would be a subtraction for like an allowance for doubtful accounts and overlay, so that brings it down to about five million something, did you say that?
Yeah, five point six million. So the number on page 40 is the one DRA you were saying.
Correct. Yeah, that's Department of Revenue number.
Yep. You want to make note of that, because we'll be doing the tax rate in October.
Those are the key numbers on the balance sheet, and if we can move to page 16. Page 16 is your profit and loss. If you were a business, I would bring your focus down, two-thirds of the way down, to the number $663,089. That would be your net profit for the year. So if you're a business, you know, that's a very good sign. However, would like to move to page 18 to really go over the budget versus actual amounts.
I'm sorry, what page?
18.
18.
18. The budget versus actual page converts to the modified accrual back over to the budget basis, so we can better compare your actuals to your budget amounts. And you'll see about halfway down that your revenues exceeded your budgets by $316,550. In addition to that, two-thirds of the way down, you had total expenditures and other uses, a turnback of $261,867, for a total positive of $578,417. So while your GAAP basis was a good number, your budget versus actual, between your revenues exceeding your budget and your expenditure turnbacks, were both positive, both heading in the right way. We can now move to page 19, which is the next page. Your business type, or your sewer fund. Would like to bring your focus about halfway down. Here you'll see your other capital assets. Because it's a business, we report this on the accrual basis. There is no deferred revenue. We have the capital assets in here. And then about two-thirds of the way down, you have a current portion of bonds payable of $125,000, and a bonds payable net of the current portion of $225. Both again, very low as far as total bonds payable. And there's definitely room in which the bond agency would see that as a huge plus, but would also note that you do have a notes payable of $2.5 million, which has to deal with the sewer line upgrades, and it's the SRF loans that are outstanding, not yet fully executed, meaning in subsequent periods, you will start paying down on that loan. At this point, would like to move over to page 20, which is the income statement for the sewer. It's noted again that the sewer is presented on a full accrual basis. So as we're looking at the figures, and we go two-thirds of the way down, and we see the change in net position, which is a, which shows a shortfall, $648,730, we have to remember that a couple of key components of that is depreciation becomes a factor. The bond payments that you make are actually smaller than what your depreciation costs are on a regular basis. So on a budget basis, if we were to reverse some of the full accrual effects and just go on the cash basis, you would have had a positive $615,293 surplus for the year. But because of the full accrual presentation and the depreciation, it's showing a shortfall. If we can move to page 22. The fiduciary funds, two components, the private purpose trust funds, that represents your scholarship funds that are held by the trustee of trust funds that are reported here, because they're not the part of the town's funds. And then also the agency funds. The agency fund number is made up of various road bonds and impact fees. And the town does maintain a schedule for each of these bonds and impact fees. So in conclusion, would say that overall, the town is in very good shape. The audit went well, and the numbers are again increasing similar to prior years.
Now, why are the scholarships reported on the town side, not on the school side? Because of the trustee's trust fund are holding them?
Because of the trustee of trust funds that are holding them, and they're on the MS9, and similar to the town, the school can't hold on to those funds either, so the trustees hold on to them. The school side would report those as a due from the trustees.
Okay.
At that point, this point, the review of the financial statements is done. Again, this year, there's no management letter. While there were some small issues we noted to management during the audit, they were minor in nature and didn't warrant a management letter again for a, I believe, a third year, if not fourth. And there was no single audit, which meant that you didn't expend any over $500,000 in federal expenditures for this year. So. And at this point, I believe you had some questions on the other post-employment benefits?
It seemed to be a much larger amount than the last time we had it done, and Don, what was it? I know you weren't here then, but how many years ago do we have, when did we have the first actuarial study done?
It all have been as of '08?
'08.
Yeah. It's every fourth year, I believe.
And this number appears quite, a bit larger than that one did.
It's growing, you know, the actuaries come up with a schedule to pay down the full liability. The overall full liability that they came up with is about $2.5 million. And so they come up with a 30-year funding schedule, but the way these actuarial schedules work is it's heavier in the first few years and much lighter in the later years. And so I think we're probably about six or seven years, maybe six years into this requirement that this liability be reported. So each year that you don't fund what the actuaries suggest you fund, it adds to the liability that gets recorded in your financial statements, which now is about $1 million. So you have a million out of 2.5 recorded right now.
And could you explain what OPEB is? Because I, we have new members of the board that are?
Right. It's other, OPEB, O-P-E-B, Other Post-Employment Benefits, and it's dealing with health insurance benefits primarily to retirees. And you know, whether the town actually pays a benefit for that, in most of the towns in New Hampshire, the town doesn't actually pay a benefit. However, the retirees are part of the same insurance pool as your regular employees, and because the retirees are older, the rates tend to be pushed up for all of your current employees, so there's actually what's called an implicit subsidy that the town, without actually getting a bill for your retirees, because everybody else, it costs more, that's what this actuarial liability is all about. So the actuaries determine that for all of your current and retired employees, that it's actually going to cost about $2.5 million in all for that.
This is done every four years?
Um, every five, I think, right?
Or five years? Less than that.
Less than that?
Three?
Three? It's supposed to be?
Every two years.
Two years.
Every two years.
Okay. Thank you.
Another similar thing I'd like to point out, too, that actually appears in the financial statements on page 45, is very similar to this other post-employment benefits issue. Footnote number 25 is talking about a new accounting standard that's going to be coming out called the Gatsby, which is Government Accounting Standards Board Statement 68. This one deals with pension costs. Now, as all other municipal employees in New Hampshire, your employees are participating in the New Hampshire retirement system. Well, they are going to have to come up with a liability for you. Your share, the town's share of the liability, of that unfunded liability for the New Hampshire retirement system. And beginning in 2015, that entire amount is going to have to be reported as a liability in these financial statements. So it's different than the other post-employment benefits, which is going in incrementally over a 30-year period. This standard says it's going to all go in in the first year, which is in 2015. So the Hampshire retirement system is working diligently right now to come up with that allocation of that liability for all of the communities in New Hampshire.
What I don't understand is that, you know, we have at the municipal level no control over either one of those numbers.
No.
We're required to provide insurance to our retirees, that's a state law, and offer them the same plans that our current active employees have. Also, we have no control over the retirement system and their shortfall. So I guess I'm wondering why these standards and who came up with that? I know, I know who the Gatsby board is.
Yeah, I mean, it's a national standard, and the real purpose is for the bond rating agencies, you know? So the bond rating agencies can compare Gostown to a municipality in California, Michigan, wherever it is. And actually, the numbers in New Hampshire are much better than they are in most of the other states. An OPEB liability, other post-employment benefit for a community the size of Gostown in Massachusetts would probably be $60 million instead of $2.5 million, because Massachusetts has a law that says that the retired employees get the same benefit as your current employees for health insurance. So if the town is paying, say, 70% of the health insurance for your current employees, the retirees get that same benefit, so it makes that liability huge. So that, you can see the benefit to the bond rating agencies now by being able to compare Massachusetts to New Hampshire.
And are you aware of the new state law that allows municipalities to fund these liabilities?
Are you aware of it?
Don?
My understanding is?
Did it pass?
In a capital reserve fund, but?
I believe that that legislation passed.
It did?
I don't have it right on me, but yeah, it's, I believe it did.
And what would be the advantage to funding that liability for a municipality?
Well, I mean, it's really trying to pay your bills as they come due. In other words, as your current employees are working right now, besides paying them their salary, there's going to be a future cost to them, so it's really just trying to match putting that money aside for the periods in which they're working. And obviously, you know, if you can make a liability go away, that's a good thing. You know, your liability, like I said, is not as large as it would be for municipality in another state, you know, where everybody's hearing about Detroit right now with the huge unfunded liabilities. Well, that's exactly what we're talking about, except on a much larger scale there. But it's pension and health insurance is the issue that Detroit's dealing with right now.
Can we start putting money away for this now?
You can.
Yeah, I think that legislation passed.
Okay.
I think Dover pushed for that through the state legislature.
So I'll take a look at that if I have time tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
I'll find that out for sure.
Yeah, what's the process? How do we go about?
Yeah, just going to?
That's a good question.
I'm not sure what that legislation says, however, what the, this Gatsby statement says is it has to be put in what's called an irrevocable trust. So once it goes there, it can't be taken out like a capital reserve, you could, you know, vote to use for something else. This, it's locked in for that purpose.
And where could the funding come from?
It could come from your general fund, your sewer enterprise could pay their share, not that they have a lot of employees, but.
So we will have a couple places probably. Look at that. That'll be a challenge.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I'm not sure of the advantage, the big advantage of doing it, so I was just wondering if you'd heard of any New Hampshire towns funding their liability?
No, New Hampshire, no.
No?
Massachusetts, you know, some of the- Massachusetts, you know, some of the wealthier AAA communities, you know, in that 128 belt, some of them are funding it, but that's about it.
Yeah, and generally, when we go out to bond, we just go with municipal bond banks. So we don't go out on the open market to get a bond rating.
No. But again, it's a prudent thing to do, you know, to set aside money. I know money is tight and...
Right.
However, it's a prudent thing to put money aside for your current liabilities and not have the next generation have to pay that.
Right. So you could probably do it with your surplus at year end, apply that to it?
That's what we've been seeing for the municipalities in Massachusetts that are doing it. They come up with a formula for doing that, a certain percentage of your surplus at the end of the year. Or they're earmarking certain monies that they're getting from the state. They'll just take that money and they'll put it into that. So it doesn't have to be a all at once. You don't have to fund it to the extent that the actuaries are suggesting. You could put aside, you know, a tenth of what they're suggesting, but just start the process.
Some question on bond rating. We get our bond ratings from where, Sue?
We don't get a bond rating because we go to municipal bond bank.
Okay.
And so it's a conglomerate of towns. They go through the bond bank.
So now, would we be better off to look outside is what I'm hearing? Would we have a better chance of possibly getting a better bonding rate outside of where we're currently looking at or...
The municipal bond bank watches the rates?
Do they?
And they may go out and rebond. We've seen that happen.
All right.
To get lower rates.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know an answer, maybe Don does, if the open market has better interest rates than the municipal bond bank.
That's what I was looking at. I mean, we're in pretty good shape here.
You're in very good shape, yeah. Do we, do we now spread our wings and look out of the inner circle to see if it would be better for us, where we have some things coming up, maybe, possibly on the horizon? I mean...
We can look into that.
Yeah.
Don can research that for us.
Yeah.
Doesn't hurt to look now, you know, rather than later. Thank you. Any other questions, Sue?
No.
So to summarize for the people on GTV 16 and 20, words or less, our financial house is in very good order.
Yeah.
Is that fair to say?
That is fair to say.
And our big challenge is the post-employment benefits that may be looming on the horizon.
And the retirement.
The retirement.
And will that hit us next year?
2015.
2015. Oh, yeah, right, yeah.
So we need to look at that, prepare ourselves for whatever decisions.
That will be a bigger number than the OPEB number, for sure.
Yeah, well... And I have one other question. The issues, you said there was no letter given?
Correct.
The issues at hand, they've been or are being addressed now as we proceed forward?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
We work with the auditors when they have some ideas. Sometimes we may have already made a change, and sometimes it warrants a change.
Yeah.
Right. Some of it's just best practices or just suggestions. And some of it has to be debated on whether it's cost-effective or other items, but none were very large.
I was going to ask, Sue, is it possible, could we just get a synopsis of those ideas?
Yeah. I haven't seen it this year yet.
Yeah, we have what we call, we call it a side letter, where we give bullet items.
Oh, great. That'd be better.
Sure.
Thank you. Well, thanks for the presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, guys. I should have good news once in a while.
We should thank our finance director and all the staff for their hard work.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Don. Thanks, guys.
Could I add just two or three words to this?
Sure.
I just wanted to add that we have very much enjoyed our working relationship with Melanson Heath. They're prompt, courteous, all the time. They always have answers. They know the stuff that we don't, which is nice. And we enjoy working with them. And I would also like to thank all of my staff members for the work that they always do, and particularly for their diligent efforts in gathering and relaying through me the information that the auditors need. They're very consistent with it, and they do a nice job.
Yeah, job well done. Please pass along your thanks and gratitude for all their hard work.
I will do that. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much.
And that was a miss all the other things that we're doing with the finance software.
I think we're a little crazy this year.
Now, do they know we're going through some software changes?
Yes.
They do. Yes.
I just, I just don't want to have a good year, good year, good year, and then all of a sudden get slammed with something and they not know that we're trying to adjust the changes.
And when we've had questions along the way, we've reached out to them.
Absolutely.
Good.
Yeah, on an ongoing basis.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Good work.
Thanks. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I haven't seen anyone show up for the 6, 10 public comments, so we'll just move ahead into the town.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Into the town administrators' report.
Thank you. You have a two-week selectman committee meeting scheduled in your packets because next Monday is Labor Day, and there is no selectman's meeting schedule, so enjoy. But when you do return, we will start with budget presentations. I won't go through these. I think the only one that wasn't covered was CIP. And Mark, you're gonna...
Yeah, that was on the...
The first CIP one?
On the 29th.
Yes, and you're covering that for Selectman Brown?
Mm-hmm. Will he be back for the other one?
Yes, I believe so.
If not, I mean, I'm available for that one as well.
Your consensus folder tonight includes the general fund AP warrant for $272,850.95 and also payroll and withholding manifest for $141,858.9. Cable revolving fund, the AP is $2,939.46, and your payroll withholding is $1,251.48. There's no special detail expenses this week. Also, there are employee status reports in your signature folder, and there are resignations. There's also thank you letters to those resigning from committees, the MS five that the auditors referenced, and late arriving today, a conditional event permit for September 7th car wash. And the conditions is that all the department heads sign on one. So motion is needed.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Thank you.
Second.
In a second. Is there any discussion on the consensus folder? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 3-0-0.
Thank you. For correspondence this evening, you have a letter from Gustown Main Street Program inviting the chairman to captain a boat for the punkin regatta. How do we resign?
Absolutely.
All right. I will let Robbie know.
Thank you.
You have enclosed a tab 4D in your packet, resignations from the Plan Panardville Committee from Tony Mertz, Mike Lawler, who was the alternate to Tony, Bill Furlong, and Jesse Lynn Tatro. In an effort to keep a quorum at the meetings, the board could consider amending the charter for this ad hoc committee by deleting the representatives of Gustown Industrial Corp. and St. Enesum College. And I did not put in a draft charter.
Right. So I'm going to side note amend charter?
Yeah.
All right. And that was to keep out the, not to keep out, but St. Az?
Just to delete St. Az. And the reason was that St. Az is no longer in the scope of the project, and that's why they feel like they shouldn't have a seat at the table.
Could we discuss this a little later when we have our committee reports?
Sure. We can do that. Back to mosquitoes. You had a public announcement earlier. Health and Human Services is not trapping mosquitoes in Gustown. The traps that are around are for a different type of insect, the purple ones.
Oh, really? Yeah, the purple thing.
Yeah, those are for something else. So...
Because I didn't think they were trapping.
No, they cut back. They, they used to trap. The city of Manchester does trapping now, but has a state lab test theirs.
So we don't know what the purple traps are for?
Yeah. We got a notice, I forget.
Conservation had given us a, it's a beetle or something that there, some type of...
Some other insect.
It's been going on for a while.
But it's not mosquitoes. I forget what it is.
I did speak to the Health Department in Manchester, and they said that most other communities contract with companies like Dragon to do trapping.
Yep, they do. And next year, we're going to put a line in under Building and Health for Public Health and put a nominal amount in there so we have money for this type of...
So how are we going to proceed as a community relative to spraying?
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up, because last week, we thought they were trapping. And if they tested positive, the board was saying, go ahead and schedule a spraying.
But now it's an unknown.
Right. So I guess the question is, do you, do you want to try? But even though Manchester's came out positive, they're not spraying yet.
I thought last week, we said we were going to go ahead with the application for the permit.
Yes, but she...
For this year and for next year.
For this year.
Okay.
Next year.
We can do that.
That's what I thought we were...
I thought it was dependent on the positive testing of mosquitoes. No?
Oh, I understood that as being whether we were going to spray or not.
Oh, okay. All right, well, then I'll tell her to go ahead with the, getting a permit this year and for next year.
Yeah.
And hold off on spraying, scheduling the spraying until, do you want her to do any trapping? Or you want to see, will follow Manchester's lead since they're bringing it in store?
When they start spraying?
Yeah.
I don't know if it wouldn't hurt to get, do some trapping in different areas.
Yeah, I think, I think we owe it to the citizens to take a proactive role here and not wait...
Do we want to just have our trap at the municipal locations that we sprayed last year, which would be Barnard Park and Roy Park? Have them do just limited trapping that gets two parts of town?
Yeah, that, that might be it.
Maybe, maybe Saret Fields, because that area there is...
Yeah, we had a list from last year, I think, same.
Yeah. But if we just do ours, then I won't have to get permission from all the other ones to do it. So Saret Field, Roy, and Barnard trapping? Okay.
Wasn't there a difference in the price of the permit, Sue, if we added an emergency one versus a regular one?
Yeah, emergency one's $1,000, and non-emergency is free, I understand.
And that's why we're preparing next year's now.
Yes, to avoid that cost. Okay. Thank you for clarification. Out of state and overnight travel requests. The police chief submits two requests, one for him to travel out of state to attend the IACP conference in Philadelphia, and one for Denise for overnight conference and training in North Conway.
So moved. Motion?
Second.
In a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries 3-0-0.
Thank you. And finally, this, fire chief is looking for authorization to post three EMT paramedic part-time vacancies due to recent resignations.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion to post those vacancies? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries 3-0-0. I have a question on that. I'm sorry, Carlos. Just when you, when the chief puts the request out, can he kind of somehow specify? I know we had talked about it the last time, about where he has a hard time to get Friday, Saturday, and Sunday night coverage. Can he kind of put that in the, in the job?
Emphasize it?
Emphasize it, yes. It is a good possibility Friday, Saturday nights will be part of your, your schedule to be, to be employed by or to work. Thank you. Excellent. Let's see, so we're down to our selectmen's discussion. Is there any new business before we get down to committee reports, new or old business? I mean, way of new business, I'll just bring up, and I think you may be aware of it, I got a call from Scott Gross, and this is just for your informational purposes. He's president of Lions Club this year, and they're in some pretty tough financial straits. And they're looking at options for unloading some of their financial responsibilities, including Lions Field. And what are they going to do? Are they going to sell it? They're going to have somebody take it over? Of course, we've got the high school baseball field down there. We've got the Triton Soccer, soccer fields down there, and a number of other activities. So it's, it's part school, it's part non-town, non-school, private uses, so it's not really directly under the purview of the Board of Selectmen. I think it's worth mentioning that they're having, they're having trouble. And I'm not sure which way they're going to go with it. Scott said they're going to kick it around some more. He'll let us know.
Do they want a concession down there, too?
It's up to the individual sports.
Oh, really?
Some of the baseball teams do, some don't.
And sometimes Triton Soccer will do.
Okay, so they raise it.
I know the popcorn stands.
Instead of Lions running it to raise it for their cost.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
So who knows? May end up being some sort of a joint agreement between the school district and Lions. I don't know.
Doesn't the school pay rent or...
Scott says the biggest expenses are mowing, fertilizing, and groundskeeping.
But they charge the, the different leagues that use it, right?
Well, they're, they're not charging enough, obviously, because...
Correct. And that was one of the things I think that they recognize, is that over the years, they haven't kept up with increases in usage fees. So there is a gap now between what they collect and what the ultimate costs of maintaining the fields.
And that's always a challenge. Gustown Junior Baseball faces that all the time. You want to keep the cost of participation down so that, you know, you get as many children into the programs as possible, but you still got to cover your expenses, so it's a tough one. So just wanted to bring to the board's attention, sort of monitor it as it goes forward.
Pleasant Street, want to mention that? All hot-topped and it's kind of like on a temporary open and close?
Yeah, go ahead. I don't, I don't know the specifics.
The Pleasant Street's been all hot-topped. I know it's closed today a little bit. They're still working on the bridge, doing some, some work, sidewalk work and stuff. But have patience. The road has got a fresh coat of pavement on it. It'll be open and close as needed. Just bear with the members of DPW working. Remember, they're working for us in this town and to make the roads better for us. So it's open, but you might expect a few delays here and there. Just let everybody know.
Yeah, we're shooting to get that done by the opening of school, so they're doing a pretty, they're doing a good job.
Hopefully, hopefully it'll, it'll work out.
Get it on track.
It's great.
Is there any other business or old business that we want to bring up before we get into the committee reports?
Meet the datas.
That's it? We'll save the Plan Panardville committee report for last, why don't we? Take out the library trustees and...
Sure. I attended the library trustees' meeting last Wednesday. I only, I was only able to attend for an hour because I had to also attend Parks and Rec at 7 o'clock. So during that time, we went through, Mike Lawler presented the budget proposal. I'm not going to go into it because we will have the budget presentations in a week. They went through some donations. There were $20 unrestricted miscellaneous donations. There's now, based on the, the new accounting methods, where they are tracking everything that comes in, fine wise, things like that. Whenever there's, you know, extra 25 cents, somebody says, keep the change or, or something, that goes into a special fund, and those, once it reaches $20, go in as a donation to the friends of the library. And there was also a $200 donation from Mrs. Chen, which the library accepted. So that was pretty much, I left right after. I had to leave right after the budget presentation. So I was not unfortunately able to sit through the whole meeting.
Thank you. Parks and Rec.
And then Parks and Rec met that same evening at seven o'clock. We also discussed the Lions Field issue. Some of the items of importance from the director's report. Roy Park Pool closed on Saturday, the seventeenth. Barnard Pool closed this past Saturday. They're having an issue with trying to find reliable commercial service for the pools. A lot of pool companies are no longer offering commercial service. It may not be lucrative or too many headaches. For one, is that they're waiting, still waiting to get their handicapped lift installed. So hopefully, that will be installed in September at Roy Pool. There is already one at Barnard Park. But then they'll be winterizing and getting everything ready for the winter. Youth football began first week in August. Trittown Travel and Recreational Soccer started the week of August nineteenth. High School began practice at Barnard Park on the fourteenth of August. We had seen a permit request for WZID for a block party. That was canceled due to weather, and they are going to reschedule to September tenth, so they'll be submitting updated permit forms for that. Some of the fall projects at Roy Park, they're gonna be removing, looking to remove some trees around the pavilion to try to dry that area out. I guess it's very heavily shaded right now, and it stays fairly moist. They will be working, Parks and Rec will be working with DPW to look at the Roy Park tennis courts, see if they can do some cutting and patching of the asphalt to get those tennis courts in operational shape. At the recreational building, the utility shed was painted. We will be seeing the Parks and Rec Director's recommendations for two bids. One for the repair of the roof, and the other for resurfacing of the basketball courts at Roy Park. And we also reviewed the budget, which we will all be seeing again during the budget presentations. And that was it.
Questions? Thank you. Phil's our planning board rep, so perhaps we'll put off his report till next week and get somebody to attend.
Nope.
We'll put that out till next week. Well, that leaves us with Plan Pinnardville Committee.
We met last week. I will say right off the bat that we did not finish our homework. We are coming back tomorrow night for another meeting and hopefully get what we need to get settled, settled. Lot of discussion, lot of debate. As you saw, we had four members leave the ad hoc committee. They all feel that there's been so much negativity placed on this plan of Pinnardville Plaza that... They don't know which way to turn. They don't know, I mean, they're not sure what their next move is gonna be. I know it was discussed and asked, do we stop this plan of Pinnardville? Or do we keep going and bring it to the planning board and let the planning board do what happens? And I basically said, "Please don't do anything drastic. Let's just let the path take its path and go down the road and see what happens." I basically said, "Who needs, I mean, who are we to say we need to finish this this year? I mean, I know it's on a schedule. Do we need to, do we need to complete the whole thing or just come up with a plan?" There, you know, there was discussion there as well. There's a lot of mixed emotions on that board, and I'm not sure what'll happen tomorrow night when they come back. We're supposed to finish tomorrow night so that we can give the recommendation to the planning board as to continue or not continue to move forward. Whatever they want to do, let them do. I handed out to the members a letter from Bob Robert Schaefer, who will be reading this letter tomorrow night. It's a pretty lengthy letter. Again, this letter, I think, if it passes, is going to probably change some more of the plan of Pinnardville with what is going to come forward, try to come forward. So we have a meeting tomorrow night. I'll make adjustments, or I'll ask the board to make, I'll ask Rosemary to make adjustments so that we can probably make an amendment to the charter to have the number drop down so that, you know, we'll be in compliance. And I mean, there's a lot of negativity that's been passed around. There's a lot of slander that's been passed around. It's just, I mean, it's, I don't know, the program has just been an uphill battle. And there are a lot of questions, a lot of concerns with the group. And some of the questions and concerns, you know, I think has caused the members to resign. You know, I said, "Try to stick it out. Try to just, you know, let's see what happens and, you know, let's ride the wave." If nothing happens at the very end, nothing happens at the very end. The voters will say no, and, I mean, that's it, you know? It's hard to tell. We're in some uncharted waters here right now.
And before you meet next, we should have something in writing from the grantor. The grantor, or the person that, our contact person there is on vacation till August twenty-ninth, I think they said.
Yeah. I don't remember the dates. I hadn't, I thought I brought the papers with me. I didn't. So we're meeting tomorrow night, and then they are going to make the recommendation and bring it to the planning board. And once it gets to the planning board...
Just the plan, right? Just the plan?
Yeah, the plan, yes. Yeah, yeah. See what, see what goes from there, so. That's pretty much it, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I guess, I'd just like to state for the record, I find it unfortunate and a little unsettling that certain members of that committee came under personal attack. I think that was a disservice to the community. There's no doubt in my mind that each and every one of those committee members had nothing but the best of interests for this community at heart. I think they were working hard. They were doing good things for the community, even though not everybody agreed with it. And I think it's very unfortunate that it had come to a point where they felt it necessary to resign. That, to me, doesn't speak well of our community here, and that's really unfortunate. I have a hard time with that.
And to add to that, we fight so hard for people to get on these committees, to volunteer. I mean, what lasting reaction or what fear will this, you know, bring to the other committees? Will people want to step forward? Will they want to volunteer their time? Will they, you know, will they want to help the town in fear of what has just happened with this committee? You know? It just, you know, I think this has a long, a long-lasting, you know, issue that will take a long time to heal.
I did want to address the, because we had some members leave because, as you mentioned, St. Az's is no longer in that focus. But we also had some individuals leave because of the attention being placed on some areas and not on the plan itself. We've had a lot of weeks of public comment, and I know the, there are a lot of residents that are very passionate about their feelings. But I did want to just step back, and last year, the Board of Selectmen solicited and appointed residents to the committee. They also put together and opened up positions for representatives from various boards. And I listed them, the Board of Selectmen, for instance. Mark is our rep. The Goffstown Industrial Corp., Goffstown School District, Bartlett Elementary, St. Anson College, Economic Development Council. I wasn't on the board last year, so I can't speak to why the grant was accepted or why they made up the committee the way they did. But I can say for myself that if I was looking to develop a committee to advance economic development in town, the two organizations that I would want to have a seat at the table would be the Economic Development Council and the Goffstown Industrial Corp. And maybe everyone's not aware, but the Goffstown Industrial Corporation is a nonprofit corporation whose mission is to advance economic development in town. And they've done a lot of things, a lot of projects. They monetarily assisted in improving the economic development website. They've made contributions to various projects. And one of the issues was individuals' backgrounds. And I think it's natural for committee members to have specific expertise in the areas of the committees that they work with. For instance, I'm the Selectman rep to Conservation, and we have members who have backgrounds in conservation and soil science. I'm not surprised at that. On the Economic Development Council and on the Goffstown Industrial Corporation, we have individuals with experience on land use, commercial real estate development. And I don't think that's a bad thing, because that's the experience that these people bring to the table that enhances their contribution. I know Mr. Martz, and I know Mr. Lawler, and they are both honest and good men. And I think I agree with you, and I don't think, but I do agree with you, that it's a shame that the conversation focused on their background and framed that background as something unethical. And I think the loss of the Goffstown Industrial Corporation is a huge loss to the planning process. So moving forward, and I wrote this down just as a suggestion, I didn't know if anybody was gonna be here for public comment or not. I would suggest that everyone, regardless of their personal feelings and how passionate they are, focus on the plan and not on personal attacks or character assassination. And remember, as you mentioned earlier, each and every member on that committee is a volunteer. And although they may not agree with us, or you, or your particular feeling, remember that what they're trying to do is what they believe is the best for the town of Goffstown, and they're giving of their time, and people should focus on that.
Very well said.
Nothing to add to that, I think. What you've referred captures it nicely. And I'm still hopeful that that group can move forward, and something good can come out of this. It may be a very small nugget, but if we can get one small nugget out of it that improves us as a community, then I would suggest the process was worth it.
Their fear when they hear HUD. HUD is the, HUD is the, I think, the issue that stops this plan dead in the water. They're afraid what HUD could do, should do, might do, would, could. They're just, they're just afraid when they hear that word HUD. If we could take the HUD out of there.
And the reality of it is, we as a community benefit from federal dollars from a huge variety of sources, whether it's our municipal efforts or our school efforts, you name it. I mean, there is a lot of federal money that flows into this community. HUD is only one.
And you know...
And if it wasn't for those federal dollars, we wouldn't be able to enjoy a lot of the things that we enjoy in Goffstown.
Back in the eighties, we accepted a HUD grant, which led to improvements of private residences in Pinnardville. And it didn't have the outcry that this has had. I mean, people benefited. They had to stay in their homes for a certain amount of time, or otherwise they would have to pay back their grant that they got from HUD. But it was a wonderful program that rehabilitated many homes down in the Pinnardville area.
And that may be something that everyone is missing, is there's an opportunity to channel that passion into shaping the plan into something that the Pinnardville residents and as well as the town want. So maybe instead of, you know, going the route of saying, "We need to throw everything out, and people are no good because they're pushing this and HUD." What portion of this plan can we take and shape into something that will be what? If people don't want housing, whatever that may be, then put that energy into shaping the smart code in the plan to reflect that. And people should take the time to look at what the code is now, what the code could be, and what those differences are. Because I think a lot of people would be surprised to see the forms of housing that are permissible right now under the current zoning ordinances.
Right.
Need to focus on the good. There is good in here. What percentage is personal? Personal opinion amongst people, but there are good pieces in here. And we need to try and, as Nick says, funnel our energies in a positive manner. Recognize what those are and take advantage of those.
Well, certainly. I know, after seeing last week's meeting, I still feel the majority of the members of the committee still have a very open mind, and they still want to see it succeed in a path that it'll work well for Pinnardville, you know? I mean, I heard discussion, Pinnardville, you know, again, as we said before, being picked on again. I mean, look at Mast Road. We got the brand-new sewer connected from Mast Road. Look at, I mean, we've done, we've done a lot of things for Pinnardville. I mean...
Water in the parks?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, we pick on Pinnardville, but case in point is, Pinnardville was behind the eight ball. Now with all the things that have come forth and come forward, I mean, now the community, I feel, is much better than where it was a number of years ago. You know, and it's just, I, the negativity was doomed to derail this program, and I think the damage has been done. And personally, myself, I feel the damage that was done is an irreversible damage. And I think, I just, I don't know, I just, you know, I have my doubts.
It may be beyond the point of no return, but I think it's still incumbent on the board to reach out and at last, at least ask the Goffstown Industrial Corp. if they would reconsider their involvement. They may not want to do that, but I think we should at least try.
And for that matter, I'd like to ask Mr. Martz to reconsider as well. You know, they're important players. They bring expertise and knowledge. And, you know, it was great regrets that I saw those letters of resignation. I thought, what a terrible loss.
Yep.
So...
A meeting tomorrow night.
Maybe I'll reach out to Tony.
Yeah.
Want Mark to do that, or do you want?
Oh, Mark, yeah.
Yeah, I can do that. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll see if I can get ahold of him tomorrow to come to the meeting tomorrow night. Him and Mike are, you know, because Mike was his backup when Tony wasn't here, right? If I'm not mistaken, so. Yep.
Yeltsom, Plan Pinnardville?
Nope.
Do we have any other business to come before the board this evening? We've gone past the second public comment period. I'm happy.
When did we have?
It's fifty. Yes, we did. So we've completed the agenda. If we don't have any other business to come before the board?
We need to...
No, so we don't want to amend the charter until we hear if we can say, or do you want to amend it to for St. Az's?
I'll make that motion that we amend the charter to remove the St. Anson College representation as the focus of the plan is no longer in that area.
Second that?
Yeah, I will.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries three-zero-zero.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Yep.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion carries three-zero-zero.